Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
My Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of May 8th, 2025. First on the agenda tonight for a public hearing is Ed Salon Howell, 371 Austin Road. Mike, I don't believe you or Rich had any comments, correct?
I do not have comments. I don't think Rich did.
No, my message is Rich didn't. And Pat?
No issues on this regrading. It's a regrading.
Yes. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? Mr. Chairman, being there's no public comment, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is-
Do you want a resolution prepared, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, please. Thanks, Pat. Next on the agenda, Putnam Plaza, 1844 Route 6, also for a public hearing. And I don't believe Mike, Rich, or Pat had any comments on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself.
Sure. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard on this?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Pat, you'll prepare a resolution?
Sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Aye, sir.
Next on the agenda for a resolution is Santangelo, 22 Kennard Road, also for, well, this is for a resolution, actually. Mike, any comments?
No comments.
Rich did not have any comments. Pat, and motivate yourself.
And you have a resolution before you, for the regrading plan, Mr. Chairman? Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
No comments from the consultants. Pat has a resolution. This is a regrading project. We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer motion, resolution of the Planning Board of the Town of Carmel, number 25, Tag 15, May 8th, 2025, tax map number 86.14, Tag 1, Tag 8, Santangelo, 22 Kennard Road, regrading plan.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda for site plan, TTSHR LLC, 25 and 27 Seminary Hill Road. Mike?
I believe you might have some comments on this.
I do. The site plan needs to be updated with current requirements, including zoning district, bulk requirements from the Schedule of District Regulation, abutting zones, et cetera. The new zoning code does not grant further submissions unless they are approved and signed. In addition, an environmental constraints map is needed to determine compliance with the net lot area requirements. I'm going to say that for every one of the applicants tonight, just so you're aware.
Okay.
I actually gave you guys, in the memo, you'll get a copy of the law.
Okay. Yes, my name is Robert Schelling from Schelling and Smith. I'm here tonight on behalf of TTSHR LLC.
Let me just finish with the-
Sorry.
That's okay. And Pat, you have some comments, and would you like to read in Rich's, if you have them handy?
So Rich is basically asking if any public improvements are required, which would require bonding, and if so, he needs that information. And my comments, Mr. Chairman, if you remember, this was legalizing, I think it's 12 units on the property. This was before you, some time ago. You adopted a neck deck in March of '24. So there's really, and they've been to the zoning board and they've obtained their variances. So there's really no change from the last time you saw this. What has changed, as Mike indicated, are the rules.
Thank you.
We moved the goalposts. That's right.
Would you like to take us through this project a little bit? I mean, I believe there's three buildings and a garage.
Yes.
Just explain the whole complex, what you want to do there, besides, I know you're going to improve the property itself, right?
Yes, there's three separate buildings. They're all back from the 1950s. Chris could expand a little bit more, but there's, one property has four units, another has seven units, and one's a former retail, served a former retail purpose with a apartment on top. And there's a total of 20 bedrooms in the property, 40 tenants. Most of them, a majority of them, have been there for over 10 years or so in their leases. Yes, as we, Mike said before, it was in front of the planning board prior, and we got moved over to the zoning board and to get several variances, which were all granted. As of right now, our engineer, Mr. Corel, could not be here tonight, so I can't speak to all the technical requirements going forward, but any comments that you have, I'll certainly convey them to him right away.
I'd like you to spend some time on what the lot improvement's going to be, architecturally, landscape-wise. I'd like, I think the board would like to see too, I'll leave it up to him to speak up also, but you need to do some landscaping there, you need to do maybe some painting. I drove up there the other day. I mean, I like the layout, but it could use a little TLC.
Yeah, I mean, we're interested in the planning board's recommendations of what they think might be required. I think from a functionality perspective, the site has been working the way it's been working in terms of the number of occupants and the parking space and all those things, and it's been working well. We've owned the building since the middle of 2023, and we've been consistently making improvements since we've taken over. Wherever they've been needed, and I mean, as, there really hasn't been much turnover. We only had one unit turnover, but we've done what we need to do to make sure the units are livable and presentable, as well as replacing a number of windows and gutters on the structures. We've implemented a laundry room in the former commercial space where the pasta factory used to be for better quality of life for all the residents. To your point about the siding, it could use a power wash. I'm sure we're happy to do that, but yeah, we're certainly interested in hearing if there's certain recommendations that the planning board has on what we need to do for the site. We're open to-
I would like to leave that more up to you, but I'm thinking more curb appeal also.
Yeah.
You know, people should drive by there and take a double take. Wow, that looks nice. I think you have an opportunity, I think the board has an opportunity. I don't know if anybody wants to weigh in on this?
No, I mean, I remember the last time you were before us, and I do remember discussion about, you had mentioned briefly some windows that were going to be upgraded, and I believe you said you agreed to clean the exterior of the buildings, as well as some landscaping. So, you know, that's what I think we're all looking for. We don't want to be in a position where we're going to tell you what to do. We'd rather you take a look at it and decide what you need, and then bring it back to us and say, this is what I'm proposing, X, Y, Z, whatever it might be.
Okay, I mean, I don't know if the types of things that you're talking about are sufficient to hold up the approval or not. If we're just talking about some landscaping and some curb appeal, I've never done this before, but I'm willing to work with the board if that's what we want to move forward with. I could propose some things right now that we could commit to, to improving that.
And I would just, again, what type of form would you like the improvements proposed in, just?
Well, I think, do you have drawings? You must have submitted, I think, you know, we'd like to see part of the drawings. And we don't necessarily need to hold anything up, by the way. Mike, are there, oh, I'm sorry, are there any specifics you look for when we say, like, I want some curb appeal here, you know? And I'd rather the applicant come forward with their recommendation.
And there's a few things with respect to this. When we first talked about this, that the utility improvements, which is what Rich commented on, need to be clarified. That may be part of it. That's not really curb appeal, but it's a benefit to the community. Mike raised another point, that we still need to have the zoning net area calculation provided for this. That's a new zoning provision. So that exercise needs to be done. In terms of curb appeal, with respect to existing buildings, you're dealing with existing buildings, so cleaning up the existing buildings. Typically, what we would do is landscaping.
That's exactly what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Paint, shutters, simple things that aren't, simple things that aren't a million dollars, but they really dress it up.
Yeah.
Clean up the sidewalks, clean up, you know, there's so many simple things you can do that'll really dress it up. Paint, paint the railings, paint the, you know, the building.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're certainly happy to do those types of things. We can, if it's just painting and landscaping and everything like that, cleaning up the property, making sure it has good curb appeal, that's certainly something we can do.
But Jack should note that on the plaque.
Okay.
Just so it's clear and it's enforceable. Otherwise, there's, yeah, I'm going to do it, and I can't do anything about it.
That's why we need to submit as part of the plans.
Some drawings from the street?
Yeah.
Some commitments that you're going, what you're going to do also.
Okay.
We're going to do landscaping. We'll put in 10 Aberviti, and I'm making up things. I don't know anything about plans.
An item list?
Item list, where it's going to be, what you're going to do to break it up. It's pretty simple, though. He has to do the environmental stuff for me anyway, so it's just one more submission, really, as long as the board's happy, which I think as long as you do something, they'll be happy.
I see. Okay.
How many buildings are there?
There's four unique structures on the building. Three of them are residential, and one is just a garage space.
So are the three residential buildings, have they been inspected and they're up to code, based on latest codes?
Every year they get inspected. Joe's been out there. I think he was just out there, wasn't he?
Yeah, out last week.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to state that, so. The improvements that everybody's talking about, the curb appeal, you should note it on there. You'll come back in some way to propose that to us, so that, you know, we could either agree or offer further comment. This board also serves as the architectural review board.
Sure, okay.
Any other comments?
No.
So look, we can, I'm going to ask to make a motion to schedule a public hearing, but you have a couple to-dos here.
Yeah.
If you're not ready, don't get on the agenda right away. Talk to Rose. When you're ready, get on the agenda with Rose.
We will.
Yeah, I think if the, well, we'll work to get it on the plans, but I think if the comeback is just the proposed list, should be able to turn that around relatively quick.
Mike said it well, these don't have to be large ticket items.
Yeah.
But they'll be a little bit of a wow factor.
Yep.
And it's nice if you can fix curb here.
Yeah, if we're not ready by next time, we'll be certain to tell Rose prior and-
You know, wait the extra two weeks. It's not, you know.
Right.
It's more commitment to do something.
Right, I understand.
And I'm sorry, if you could educate me on the net, the net area calculation?
It's long and boring. If you want to come tomorrow, I'll be happy to go over it.
Okay, we could send you. That's fine. Thank you.
All right, someone make a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for 25 and 27 Seminary Hill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, People USA Stabilization Center, 1071 Stonely Avenue, amended site plan.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Rebecca Valk with the Law Office of Rebecca Valk in Poughkeepsie, New York. I am here proud to represent People USA, seeking approval to establish a stabilization center here in Carmel to serve the residents of Putnam County. I have with me this evening Rich Tompkins from Maury Architects, also in Poughkeepsie, Steve Michio, who is the CEO of People USA, as well as Amy Grisbinsky, I have to write down. I'm sorry, your title?
Director of Strategic Initiatives.
Director of Strategic Initiatives.
All right, so I'm going to ask the consultants to give their feedback on what they've reviewed.
Okay.
Then I'm going to turn it back over to you to explain the project, take us through the project, then I'll open the floor.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mike? Thank you.
The applicant proposes to occupy an existing building in the TC Town Commercial Zoning District off Stonely Avenue in Carmel. A stabilization center is a permitted principal use in a TC zoning district. Professional business and medical offices are permitted. They're number two on the list. Is a buffer proposed to the residential property to the north and east? Which floor will People USA occupy? Provide floor plans and elevations. Will there be any exterior lighting? Provide details of the lighting spell plan. Environmental constraints map is needed to determine compliance with the net lot area. I was just talking about on the previous one.
Thank you. And Pat, would you just summarize Rich's as well as your own?
Yeah, Rich doesn't have many comments on this. He notes the permits that would be required. He talks about whether a wetland determination is necessary, and he wants to see a traffic and vehicle movement plan. And if there's any improvements, he needs bond, bond numbers. Primary issue with this, these are some of my comments, we have to have a very strong understanding of the nature of the use. So this is a different kind of operation. We've never seen something like this in the town before. So gaining a very strong understanding of how the facility operates is important. The applicant submitted some information, but I think getting some further clarification as you go through your review would be helpful. Again, it's described as a mental health crisis facility. So a couple of questions that relate to this, is this a licensed facility? Do you need a license from the state or the county? That's a question. We didn't get a floor plan of the interior of the use, so how the space is being used on the inside needs to be clarified for us. They've identified the number of individuals that would be treated at the facility every day. So there's a question of how folks would be delivered to the facility. Do they come by ambulance? Do they come by? Do the police bring them there? Do they come on their own? So understanding how the peak, the give and take, how the flow of how the facility operates is important to understand. And that relates to things like, is there a peak hour that produces a peak hour of traffic at the site? Five to six employees, two to four over the overnight shift. This is a 24/7 operation, by the way. So clarifying accommodations and are there COTS there? Do people stay over occasionally? Clarifying that, understanding that. With respect to, I mentioned earlier, how people get there, if it's ever a situation where ambulances deliver folks, there should be an ambulance parking or standing area on the site. They have changed some of the circulation on the site from 92 reparking to angled parking. So if the ambulance, for example, if the ambulance has come there and they park there, you don't have circulation through the building. So if it's going to happen, it should be in the back. It should be a designated area and so forth. And then the parking requirement relates, so Mike just clarified what he thinks the use, how he classifies the use. That relates to the parking requirement on the site, so we have to update the parking requirement on the site too. And they're adjusting the numbers slightly. Mike mentioned lighting plans. Is there any outdoor use areas? So we've seen similar facilities before that do have, it's a standard thing to have some sort of outdoor space for people. Is that proposed? It doesn't show it on the site plan. So a lot of clarifications with respect to this, and that's, that's my comment.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, so there was a lot of points raised in that synopsis, so I'm going to try my best to hit upon what I can.
And you can get a copy of all those comments from Rose?
I believe we-
His comments, or was that a different consultant whose comments we received today?
And I was wondering, Mr. Carnaza, will you be providing written comments of your synopsis from the-
You could get them all from Rose. She'll have-
Rose will have, okay, great. Or Dawn. Yeah, so Mr. Franzetti did submit some comments, but I believe we need an additional letter, so. As touched upon in the letter, this is a community crisis center where individuals who are having some form of mental behavioral distress will come. The one point I like to say is, though, this is not meant to be a one-size-fits-all facility. What happens is, and I provided a video link, I'm not sure if the link stayed live in the letter when it sent through. Okay, yeah, so I like to have that because it's really speaking from those who are providing the services themselves. And I believe we have arranged that we can play that again this evening, if any board members would like to see that again. But this is a model that has been working in the city of Poughkeepsie for a number of years now. Very well supported by Duchess County. The client is working to open a facility in Ulster County in a building owned by Ulster County, because that's how strong the county supports this model. And we do have representatives from the county here, Putnam County, here this evening. The Putnam County is working with this client to establish this facility for residents of Putnam County. When I say that this is not a one-size-fits-all model, does not mean everybody with every single form of an issue is going to get full services. And I invite the clients to come up and stop me if they want to correct or add to what I'm saying, because these are the individuals who work with this population every day. So for example, if someone is coming in with a substance abuse challenge, they may be screened, get into a more stable setting, and then transferred to a facility that is meant for those needs. This is not a detox facility. Individuals are only permitted to stay up to 24 hours. The phrase we like to use is 23 hours and 59 minutes. At that point, they have to either be placed in another facility, or if appropriate, if whatever the distress at the time was has resolved, then arrangements are made for them to have, to go home, essentially. They are not, I would actually ask the client to come up, they are not just opened and expected to go home. They will be arranged to arrive to a home.
Yeah, to better explain it.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Steve Michio. I'm the CEO of People USA.
Can you speak in my-
Sure. We created this model because in communities that we serve, we get a lot of calls as an organization by families and people in our communities that say they went to the hospital and they were discharged without getting the care they needed or deserved. And so we designed this as a voluntary, and this is all voluntary, for people to come to the facility if they're having some kind of distress, or if they're dealing with substance use and want to start their recovery, they can come in. And they are assessed by a clinician. We have nurses there too. We do not provide medicine, so they're not coming there for their medicine or their medical, you know, needs for psychiatric or substance use care. We are partners with all the community organizations so that we can get them there within that 24-hour timeframe. So what this does is it avoids a lot of trauma for people that are coming, are in, having distress and wanting help. And unfortunately, hospitals have always been very traumatic for people to go to. Emergency rooms are very traumatic to enter. Even if you're not there for a mental health issue, just going into an emergency room can be difficult. This is an environment, it's almost like walking into a living room, more than anything. It's a very comfortable environment. There are no beds in this environment. It serves across the lifespan as well, so we're serving children, you know, from three-year-olds up to, you know, life, through the lifespan. And it just really assesses what their needs are, and then we utilize the current mental health and substance use systems within our community, but also outside of the community if needed, to get them the services that are going to be appropriate for the quality of care that they need to recover, to get into a better place. We work very closely, since we opened in 2017 in Duchess, the schools started using us more because they weren't getting the quality care for the children that they wanted from the hospitals and the emergency rooms and the other services in the community. We provide a lot of empathetic and compassionate care for you, for everybody. But we make sure that when they go back to school, that we communicate with the school how we can work with each other and help that student get through whatever it is they're dealing with. And we deal with a lot of bullying issues, a lot of, just, I guess, you know, the social media issues that happen today and whatever. So we're seeing during the school year, over 50% of the people that come through the door are under 18 and in school. And then, and then we're also seeing, like I said, across the lifespan. So this is really, if you think of it, Crisis Center is a really bad name. It wasn't what I wanted to call it when we, when we opened, but the county exec at that time wanted to call it a crisis center. It's really a wellness center, you know, to, to way to think about it. It's not taking those folks that are mandated by police or mandated by anybody to come to. The way the police piece works is that if a police officer, we do a lot of CIT training, which is Crisis Intervention Team Training. We train officers in a 40-hour week on how to engage people with substance abuse and mental health issues. So now they have a new tool that they can use, and they use it a lot in Duchess County, not a lot. I'd say about 17 to 23 times a month, we have a police officer drop somebody off at the stabilization center. That's a voluntary drop-off, though. So what the officer can say to someone is, I have one of two choices, well, three choices. I can arrest you on vagrancy or whatever it is they're doing. I can bring you to the emergency room for a psychiatric or substance use evaluation, or I can bring you to this place that's voluntary that's called the stabilization center, and they'll explain that program to them. And then most times, folks say, bring me to the stabilization center, and they get a much better outcome. The officers like it because many times when they brought people to the emergency room, the person is released and then back out on the street again, and can be an issue for police. We don't do that. We follow up and we follow through with everyone that we serve to make sure that they are, first of all, going back to where they live, secondly, getting the services they want, and then we follow up with phone calls. 24-hour phone call, 48-hour phone call, one-week phone call, one-month phone call. And if they want more of that, we'll continue that, or they even come back to the stabilization center so we can continue them on getting the appropriate services that they need. The mental health system has gotten very complex, unfortunately, or the behavioral health system, and difficult for families and people to get the services they want. So we're trying to fill a gap so that these folks can get the services they need. And that, and it also plays in nicely to our mobile services that we're creating here in Putnam County as well, where the mobile team and the stabilization center work hand-in-hand in getting people to the appropriate services.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also just discussed with the representative, we don't have ambulance drop-offs. The ambulance system is not, they're not just going to show up and say, hey, we think this is somebody for you. This is a system where there's a communication, again, a voluntary. If it was ambulance, most likely they'd be going into a more hospitalized setting because we have a more urgent situation occurring. And I think that what Steve just mentioned about the network of behavioral, I think it's an important point to remember that it is a network, and these agencies are communicating. We're not just going to have random. As you looked in the video, school districts are calling and saying that they're recommending a student go over because they're having an issue. The police are- The police are recommending it. There are families and individuals who drive themselves directly, walk in and explain the situation that they're having. But then it's working with the other services in the network. This is not on an island by itself. They are all communicating and talking to each other, and I think that's the important point. Because I think sometimes when, I've done work for this client for many years, and they do these new groundbreaking concepts that the behavioral of every county loves, but people tend to be a little nervous about something they haven't experienced before. So there's a lot of questions. So my point here is, it's nothing to be scared of. It is another arm in the network of behavioral services that you're offered here in Putnam County.
What happens if somebody is homeless and they show up there?
And they do. We are very tied into a shelter system. We also have another program here in the county called the Rose House, which is a respite house. And they can go there if needed. Most times, we try to get them into the shelter system. But it's, my team is just incredible at finding transitional housing and shelter for people when they are unhoused.
And you said there were no beds?
No beds.
Showers?
We have showers, we have laundry, because some people come in kind of need it. And the chairs are just comfortable, like a, you know, recliner, but it's really not a place for people to go and stay or anything like that. We average in Dutchess County about six hours from when they walk in the door to when we discharge to the services that they require. If it's an overnight, you know, of course they'll stay until we can get them into either a rehab or service or whatever in the morning, but that's really it.
Can you walk us through a typical day?
Sure.
So what might we expect if somebody comes? What would they, what would they expect?
Sure. They're greeted with a lot of respect and dignity when they walk in. They're introduced to who we are and what we can do for them. We'll ask them what they, what brought them here, and they'll tell us their story or whatever's happening for them. That's immediately, assessment starts right there. Then the staff and anybody can greet them. It could be a social worker, it could be a nurse, it could be a person with lived experience, what we call a peer, could be a substance abuse specialist. Everyone is cross-trained to greet anybody that walks through the door. We start the assessment process to figure out what is it this person needs. Is it substance use? Is it health? Is it mental health? Figure out what resources would be best for that person, talk to them about that, share that with them, and then work on the discharge.
And how is this funded?
This is funded, in Dutchess County, it was funded completely by the county, because they believed in it so much. Because of, we were the first one in the Northeast to ever create this thing. And because of that, the state saw the value in it, the Office of Mental Health and the Office of Addiction Services. And they are the first, they combined license now to create more of these. So there are twenty-four that have been approved and more coming in the state so that they can really fill the gap of, you don't need the emergency room crisis level intensity of care, but you need something. And this is that something that really fills that gap.
So the state will fund the one in Putnam County?
Well, Medicaid also funds it.
Okay.
So the county has started with the county funds to get it started. We will roll right into the license, which is the Medicaid funding, and then it becomes sustainable through Medicaid and then the state.
How do you deal with people that come in and escalate into an agitated state or a violent state?
Sure. That's the beauty of this service, is it is voluntary. So we remind the person that they're there voluntarily. They're not there, not being forced to be there. As and if agitation continues, all of the staff are trained in de-escalation training, various ways of de-escalation training. And to date, we have had no issue with anyone coming in and having, going beyond that to have any other further needs.
Just kidding.
No violent issues?
No.
No issues with guns, knives? Do you have metal detection?
No. No. We have lockers as they walk in. We ask them if they have anything, please put it in the locker. They do. That's the beauty of being voluntary. You know, when they know when they're in control, they're gonna be a better patient or a better person to serve than the person that's kind of mandated in there.
What can go wrong?
Anything could go wrong, because, I mean, look at our society. Anything can go wrong. I think being prepared for that, though, is what's important. So having good relationships with the emergency or first responder community is important. Having tremendous amount of training for the staff that work at the facility is important. But I think what our, what our approach has always been is, we don't expect the bad things to happen. We expect good things to always happen. And we're not being naive about that, but when you have that approach, you really create a better and healthier and safer environment.
I'm asking, I mean, I think I understand the purpose and the method. What I'm curious about is, what type of emergency services do you need from the town in order to operate safely?
Yeah, we, there's really not a great need. We want to be partners with the police department. We do CIT training in the county. They're invited to go through the training. That builds a really strong bond and relationship. We're very tight with all of the departments in Dutchess County, and there's fourteen departments. So we have those very close relationships. We don't really have a use for ambulance. If there was, then we, you know, would call, but there's really no urgent needs that we've experienced.
No medical issues?
Medical issues, sure, yeah. We'll get those folks to the hospital, which is, the hospital in Dutchess County is right across the street, actually, from the, from a stabilization center. We do find that a lot of people come in that have health needs. That's why we have nursing there. So they can make that assessment and say, well, I think you need a different level of care. We can send them to the federally qualified health center, or we can send them to the hospital emergency room, or even urgent care to get that, you know, the physical health needs, cares needed.
So whether it's an emergency or someone needing more medical attention, how do people transport out of there?
Yeah, we use Uber Health as one of the services we have. We use a taxi voucher system. We can use, we have our own vehicles. We have staff that are also part of a law enforcement assisted diversion program that can also transport. So we have various methods of transportation, and they can drive themselves if they did drive themselves, or they can have family members take them, too.
And on the way in, are they self-transported, or are you mentioning policemen bringing them in?
Yeah, people come in on their own. They can, they might walk, they might take a bus, they might get a ride in, or family members, or...
Police drop-offs?
Police drop-offs, yeah.
After the initial period where council described it as a twenty-three-and-a-half hours?
Yeah.
Are there follow-ups at the...
Yeah, I wanted to express how important that is. We follow up with everybody we serve.
Well, I guess more specifically, are there like group settings that are conducted at the facility, or...
No, no, no groups in the, no, no groups. We don't hold any groups in the facility. We have other offices and facilities that we do have groups at, so we will recommend some people will go to that. But the population we're serving now is not just the people you may be thinking about that are always having mental health or substance use issues. We're serving children, families, all, everyone in the community, basically. It's really open to everyone in the community. And more and more, we're seeing what we've normally have termed chronically normal people coming to the facility and getting the help that they need, which has really been a plus for the community.
So this is, I mean, if I could use, this is more like a triage, if you would...
Sort of like a triage urgent care, kind of a thing? Walk in, figure out what you need, and then get you to the service you need.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
What about on the, oh, sorry.
Sorry. Just one other question. When I took a drive up there earlier this week, I saw some other businesses operating in the building. How do you guys, where will your facility be in the building, and will those other businesses continue to operate?
So you mean a proposed site that we're going to?
Yes.
Yeah. There's a dental office in the back, and then we'll be in the lower level in the front when you pull up to the building.
We are, we are going to be the full first floor, and Rich reminded me that under, this is gonna be licensed by OMH, and under OMH regulations, there cannot be beds in this facility. We wanted to make that point.
Who owns the property?
It's owned by, I believe, Rifkin Realty Company is the name of the entity.
Will they continue to own it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Will they continue to own it?
Yes, we are not purchasing, we have a lease.
I don't know if this really applies, but, I mean, we, I would like to see just a turning diagram when it comes to vehicle movement on the site. Some of those turns in the parking lot are a little tight. God forbid you need a fire truck to come. I want to make sure the fire truck's able to make it through the site, not be able to, not be blocking anything or anything like that.
Yeah. Basically, all of the pavement is...
Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, sorry. Rich Tompkins, Maury Architects. The pavement, we're not really changing, so it's all what's there. The reason for changing the angled parking from the current straight parking is that it doesn't meet the backup requirements, and the existing lower level doesn't have code-compliant handicap accessibility. So in providing the code-compliant handicap accessibility and parking space, we had to angle the parking in order to make that. So, I mean, I know that was one of the comments, I just got them today, so we can look at some of the truck turns and turning radiuses. But again, a lot of the pavement, we're not changing anything there.
Yeah. That is consistent with what our town engineer also asked for, because he asked for traffic and vehicle movement, graphic representation of vehicle movement. So it's very typical first movie viewer project to show the vehicle movement.
Yeah, I was actually, I know he was out of the office today, because I wanted to talk to him about that, because he just said vehicles. I assumed somebody would want to see an emergency vehicle. I'm assuming garbage trucks.
Just fire trucks and garbage trucks, yeah.
I'm assuming a regular vehicle, so probably the three. But I wanted to touch base with him to find out exactly what he was looking for.
You should probably speak to the fire department to find out which truck would be.
Well, we did submit to them.
Yeah, I'm saying to find out which truck, put on your diagram.
Yeah, I, again, I haven't heard any comments or seen any comments from them, but that would be part of that, and at least, obviously, the ambulance.
Actually, is anything on the building being changed, footprint?
We're not expanding, so we're just taking over that first floor. There is some changes along the front where we are adding a handicap ramp and platform. Looking at maybe putting a little roof cover over that so someone, you know, can get out of the rain as they're coming up or out of the snow. But that's not on the plan right now, but...
We'll want to see it.
Of course. Yeah, of course, yeah.
And the question came up earlier about will there be any outdoor use? Will you have a picnic area, playground? Will you have anything like that on site?
Smoking?
No, we don't have any of that.
What about smoking areas? No smoking?
Yeah. State license, state load.
So just getting back again, I know I asked before about the funding of it, and you said the state and then Medicaid would pick it up. What, if any, impact would it have on taxes, Putnam County taxes and taxpayers? Is there any impact that you can think about?
No, because the Medicaid has a very little impact on the community, first of all. So really, there's no, there's no financial impact to the taxpayers.
Good, okay. One other question, too. How would this be, honestly advertised, maybe is not the right word, but how would people know that it's there?
Yeah, well, first, we've already been talking to all the different providers in the community, letting them know. The schools, we've reached out and had a lot of meetings with them. We have a marketing team that goes out and meets with businesses and other associations and whatever to share the information.
Right. But I know you mentioned people can just come in if they feel they need it. I mean, how would they know it's there?
Well, that's what I mean, but the more we get the word out, you know, so it's a marketing plan that we'll have to really address that.
In your other operation for Poughkeepsie, do you have the same size facility with the same number of people?
The Poughkeepsie facility's larger.
Okay.
This is probably the smallest stabilization center in New York that we're proposing, so it'll be a lot less traffic.
How do you determine the size?
Population, then we look at Medicaid. We can look at the Medicaid numbers through the state and every region that we work in and see what those numbers look like. And we can configure how much we can serve and the square footage that we are renting, and that's how we can determine the flow.
Any other questions? I think at this point, you could work with the engineer and close a couple of these items, and then when you're ready, schedule a comeback with Rose, and come back and see if we can, see if we can make some decisions.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
You'll get all the comments from the secretary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Carmel Residential, 119 Seminary Hill Road, residential site plan. Mike, comments, please?
The applicant proposes to develop twenty-three-point-four acre lot off Seminary Hill Road and Mechanic Street in Carmel with thirty-nine townhouses, which is a reduction of eleven units from what was previously submitted. Site plan needs to be updated with the 2025 code requirements, including zoning district, bulk requirements, abutting zones, blah, 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 the whole thing, and include the net lot area, as we discussed earlier.
And Pat, you want to net out Rich's comments?
No, so Rich has a dozen pages of comments on this. The primary issue here, as Mike just said, the project's been reduced in scale.
Mm-hmm.
The length of the road's been reduced, so all of the impact issues that now are in our code have to be redone, and all the numbers have to be redone in terms of areas of disturbance and all of that stuff. So we now have to look at it under the context of our new code. But the big takeaway tonight, and you'll hear Zach talk about it, is the change in the scope of the project. So that's really where they're, they have submitted supplemental information. They provided new photo renderings and visual impact stuff, along with the modified plan, but this is your first opportunity to see the modified plan.
Right. Yeah, there's literally twelve, eleven, twelve typewritten pages you can get from Rich.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's left. I know a lot of his comments are, we keep going back and forth and saying they're addressed.
I'm sure they are.
I, we can debate that. I, you know, we'd love to drop them out, but we just note them as addressed.
And Pat, do you have anything you want to comment on before I turn it over?
So the primary issues with respect to the change in this is, as I indicated earlier, documenting, for example, sewer and water changes, trip generation, traffic changes, cut and fill changes. Theoretically, it's all to the good, reducing impacts, but we obviously need that quantified, and that would be ultimately baked into any decision you make. So all of that technical information needs to be supplied to us.
So in the expanded AAF, you want the expanded AAF revised to, yeah, we were studying something that was more impactful in every way.
So ultimately, we need to have the correct numbers when we get to the point of an approval. So we don't want to use the old numbers that were in the old DAF, we want the new numbers. And again, I think it's all beneficial to you, but we just need to have it. There were two other minor issues, not minor, but two other issues related to the environmental issues. There is an endangered species on the site, they need to provide a mitigation plan for the northern long-eared bat, and they are contiguous to a historic cemetery. So we need SHPO's confirmation that the project will not have an adverse impact.
Thanks, Pat.
Seeker-related stuff.
Long-eared bat, they could just work in the off-season.
That's what it is.
Maybe a overview of the changes, and I'm sure most of us, if not all of us, have read through this all.
Yes, as you're, again, Zach Pearson inside engineering here on behalf of the applicant, just to start out, the prior rendition of this project had fifty units total, thirty-three attached townhouses with seventeen single units. We, you know, just to remind everybody, we were nearing a good spot with the visuals. You know, we had done a bunch of additional studies, different vantage points across the town. Leaf-on, leaf-off, balloon, you know, head you guys out to the site. So with that, you know, to really try to just get past all of the visuals, we took a closer, much closer look at the site, and were able to move the development down off the top of the hill. This, this was the top of the hill here, and most of you have been out to the site. We've moved the entire development to come up, you know, shortened the road by over two-hundred feet.
We've moved the entire development to come up, you know, we shortened the road by over 200, 230 feet less. So, with that, you know, we're, we're not even disturbing the top of this hillside. Again, 33, or 39 total units. Couple other things that we looked at when we did that were, we flipped the recreation area. We moved the recreation facilities away from the adjoining neighbor. I know we had, we had talked about that a little bit at a couple of the past meetings. So, we put the parking in this location. But, yeah, with the visuals, you know, I believe the max, you know, the height of these units are at like 690 now. We were, we were up at over 700 at the top of this hill, and we were taking the top of the hill from 720 down to 700. So, we're leaving the top of the hill alone, I can flip this around if you want to see the grading, I can show you.
Zach, could you mention the shift in bedrooms? The shift in the number of bedrooms?
Yeah, there, I don't have that off the top of my head.
So, they're all going to be three-bedroom units now, right?
Right, all three-bedroom units.
Yeah, it used to have two and three-bedroom units, and now it's entirely three-bedroom units, and those also have flex space in them.
Correct. And we, you know, we did...
And by the way, just another thing, I'm sorry, Zach. The purchase price has changed, too, so originally, these were half million dollar units, now it's up to six or $700,000 units. I assume that's because the change in bedroom counts in the units. So, I think there's a marketing shift as well, in term, and as well as a physical shift off the hill.
Correct, and we did a couple of different things to try to mitigate. I mean, we heard the board's concern about, you know, pushing out, we tried to pull some of this grading back, which we did. You know, we lessened the grade along the back of these units, we made those tuck under, so that you kind of, you come into the lower floor and you come out of your first floor, as opposed to, you know, we had a much steeper and more impactful grade along the southern part of the property. This, the northern or eastern side stayed about the same, and again, as you can see here, there's the top of the hill up at 730. We're not even touching that, you know, these units are all, first floor is down at 700, 600. And we, you know, we kind of cut into the hill a little bit, but we don't, we leave the top of that vegetated. With the recreation, we did include a walking trail, you know, to kind of take advantage of that natural space that we protect.
Zach, so, less units, but larger units or larger three-bedroom units anyway?
Different configuration of the site, correct.
With the square footage, average?
I don't know off the top of my head, I have to break open my calculator to figure it out.
Is it the text there on the building itself?
No, this is all first floor, these are all the elevations, right? First floor, second floor.
It's three levels each unit? Three levels?
Three levels, yeah.
So, do you know off the top of your head, did the water usage, your estimation of water usage go down?
Yes.
The only reason I ask is you have more bedrooms.
The water, the water and the wastewater numbers went down from the prior, previous iteration, right? So, we've, we submitted to the consultant, we've received comments back on the water, we've received comments back on the sewer. Again, I didn't, we didn't see anything there that was detrimental to the town system. On the sewer side, we were asked to... We thought the consultant was going to provide us an assessment of the system, the town system. We were basically told to figure out the town system, so now we're in the process of what that's going to mean. But, overall, for the, for the flow coming, I mean, it's less flow than we had previously proposed, and with this flow, we don't see it being an issue. We just have to prove it out to, to the consultant. There is a pump station with a pump. We're meeting the town's infomark, we're meeting them to go through the flow meter in that pump station next week.
And initially, how many townhouses were there, 50?
There were, it was, the breakdown was 33 townhouses and 17 singles originally.
And now it's just 39?
39, correct, yes.
How has the changes impacted traffic? I still have some concerns about...
Less.
The intersections south on Seminary Hill going from there.
Yeah, so, traffic, it's less than the 50 units, right? We also submitted to the traffic consultant through, you know, through Rose. We got a comment letter back where they didn't have the expanded EAF and the traffic study in that. So, a lot of the comments we received back were comments that were in the information that we've already, we've prepared for the board. So, I do know that that was sent to him now, so he does have that information. He did have some site-related comments, which I, which are very easily addressed, but his, his issues with traffic and accident rates and turning studies on seminary and all of that was already prepared, I mean, he just...
They just did that, that senior housing complex when you realigned the road there, so that's on there, right? They know about that?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure, because you don't want them to do it based on that little side road they came through at one time, because that would be bad. There were a lot of accidents there.
Yes.
Can you explain the landscaping plan in the front end of the units? I'm thinking about things like trees to break up the, you know, rowhouse look.
So, we've got street trees along the sidewalk, not, you know, breaking up the units as much as we can. And then, there's typical planting, you know, in, in each of the walkways and each of the, you know, entrances into the building.
So, how many trees and what type?
You want me to count from the bottom of the road all the way up, or?
I'm really focused in front of the units.
Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 8 trees in front of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 clusters of buildings. They are red maple, cure, red oak, red maple and red oaks.
And what's the color scheme on the front architecture? I mean, I saw the elevations, but it...
Yeah, it was on the renderings, it was brown, you know, different shades of brown and khaki, you know, with different textures.
And is it going to be different from unit to unit?
Broken up, yeah, not the mass, I know we discussed that with you guys prior about the other development, which I'll name again, having one color.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions?
Just one, did you, do you have a rendering of what it would look like? Because remember, we were concerned about the, and I know the elevation's less now, but you had pictures before and you said you were going to...
Yeah, it's, it's right there, it's perfect, it's in the, it was in the packet, expanded EAF, I blew it up. This is the site, this is the view that we talked about a bunch, right? These, these, these units were 10 feet plus higher before, right? So, we knocked them down another 10 feet, and again, we made the point that existing trees and the topography between this location and where this sits is, you know, the sightline, again, it's knocked out another 10 to 15 feet.
It's behind Pulte, they would have to fall down to see it.
Correct, yeah, it's behind Pulte, and again, there's knobs in here with existing vegetation that we're not touching, and there are hundreds and hundreds of feet deep.
But, I don't know if they understood that it was behind the Pulte buildings.
Yeah.
You can't...
Well, Pulte's here, but there's a...
Pulte's here, they're lower, so there's no way to see it.
No, we're, we're higher.
No, but you're not going to see it.
We're higher, but there's, there's bumps in between.
The sightline.
Correct, the sightline.
Below the line.
The sightline, you can't, because you'd have to look through it. Distance, you'd have to look through half a mile of trees to see it.
I would recommend you leave Rich and knock off a lot of those items.
Love to.
And then we'll get you back on the agenda.
So, just procedurally, I mean, we love to schedule public hearing, it sounds like it's premature for that at this point.
With 11, 12 pages of comments, yeah, we need to see that decrease. I don't think you fall away, I think the law is just administrative work.
Just for clarity, you know, on the, on the EAF, we're going to, you guys would look for a revised traffic. All the reports that are packed into that document that we prepared for a more impactful development, you want it scaled back to the...
So, I know Pat and Mike said it, we need the new numbers.
I, I get it, I get it, yeah.
Even though they're beneficial to the town and to you, to everyone involved, less water usage is good for us, but we need to document it.
Sure.
And the environmental constraints, Matt?
Yeah, we, so that, I get it, we talked about code, we talked about that piece of the code, which...
But, by doing this, you're, you're well with it, so...
Yeah, we're going to be with that.
Nick brought up traffic, less traffic, we need this all part of your, it's a good package, it's good news, we just need to see it.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll see you back here as soon as you...
Soon, listen, as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda, Messina Family Trust, 174 Winston Pond Road. Now, we saw this at the year or two, though, I believe. Mike, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, just a question for them, is the commercial business still operating there, that's the first thing. Barren's is needed for, or, yes, needed for lot area. That may change, they have to do the environmental constraints map, too, so they are going to get some of their property disallowed, I believe. Pool, house shed and garage room in the rear setback barrens is required, large amount of fill dumped on the property is now being addressed. PCDOH approval is required, environmental constraints map is needed to determine compliance with the net lot area requirements. And I attached the law below, so if you could have it.
And, Pat, your comments?
Rich has a memo, he speaks primarily to the other approvals that are required from the other agencies. So, when this was last before us, so my comments when this was last before us, there was a concern about the material that had been brought onto the site. Paul has been working with the agencies to develop a remediation plan. Paul tells us that those agencies, the DEC and Department of Health, are okay with the remediation plan. No offense, Paul, but we should hear it from those agencies, so we don't have any correspondence from them, so...
We need a lot of documentation.
We need to close the loop on those items. Basically, what he's doing is he's capping the area with pavement. And there's some removal of material, I think, as well, but primarily, it's capping the material that's on the site. And that's really the primary issue. And then, this has to go to the zoning board, too, so that's your next step. It's, it's a matter of having some level of confidence, Mike's happy about that, that, that the remediation plan's found to be acceptable.
Paul, you want to take us through, you know, especially the remediation plan?
Well, that's, that's been the focus, and reality is...
Let me, I should just give a, this has been here a while ago.
Yes.
Why don't you give us a little overview, so go back to the beginning, let, some of these board members might not have been here when that came up. So, take us through the whole project.
The town had issued a violation, I believe, that fill had been brought in and placed on part of the lot. For what time period, that's unknown. But, basically, from what I could tell, this whole area up in here had been filled in. And part of where had been filled in, they have now have, you know, an asphalt parking area, driveway. So, in essence, whatever materials underneath is capped. We did soil samples through this area. The soil samples came back, I think, with pesticides, which are normally found, you know, with landscapers. If they take out brush and cut material from a project site, which is what this fellow did, because he's in the landscaping business, and brought it back to his site to bury it or whatever, to use as fill, that came up in the soil analysis. So, it was, the numbers were a little bit higher than unrestricted residential use. But, for a commercial property, the numbers are fine. But, from your standpoint and the homeowner's, you know, the homeowner's standpoint, yes, there's an, there's an existing commercial business taking place on this property now. But, down the road, if you wanted to sell the property, which at some point is going to happen, and an individual family bought it, well, then you really are looking to meet the unrestricted, you know, you're looking to meet the residential code requirements on the property. So, I had contacted the New York State DEC, had several conversations with them. They don't want to be involved, and trying to get something in writing, I'll probably be back in a year, in reality. The health department doesn't have the personnel there who are qualified to make a decision on this.
Well, it's almost like, why would the health department make an exception, knowing that when a house sells, it's not approved? Right, so why would they grant an exception, knowing that...
They don't have jurisdiction, and they don't have the expertise. I ended up working my way up the chain to talk to somebody up in Albany, I got to the point where I had asked for a letter, and nothing ever happened, and my follow-up contacts were just unanswered. And, you know, that's, it's been, I guess it's been over a year.
Yeah, it's been a while.
And I'm not, you know, I'm not getting anywhere, and if we backtrack to the last time I was here, I thought it was best that Richard made contact with the state and the county, as opposed to myself, because I work for the client. And I could see where, okay, you get into a gray area when you get into that role.
Why doesn't, didn't he just take out the fill? The contaminated soil fill brush that you mentioned? Why'd they cap it instead of take it out?
You could take it out. I mean, the answer I got from the DEC was the simplest thing to do is just to push it, put clean fill over the top. Because at the end of the day, what, what they're looking at in, in the numbers that we had for results is, if you're not going to come in contact with it, there's, there's, there's no issue. So, we're talking about a steep slope hillside over here, as opposed to, say, the backyard area of the house. If you were talking about the backyard area of the house where a child could be out there digging and playing and having his tonka trucks running through the dirt, then yes, and I would say, yes, take the soil out, if that were the location. But, here, it's a steep slope, it's going to re-vegetate, no one's ever going to be there to do anything on it. You're not going to have a garden on it, you're not going to be growing anything, you're just going to have brush in whatever trees or saplings.
Did they put that in writing?
No.
And here, here's the thought, Paul, with respect to that. So, if you were to call up DEC and say, am I cool with doing this, they're not going to answer that question. If you submit, so for them to regulate a contaminated site, they require the approval of a remedial action plan, a RAP. So, you can submit to them a remedial action plan that said, we covered it with asphalt and it's six inches thick and whatever it is, they will respond to that.
Okay.
So, instead of just asking the questions, am I cool, give them something...
So, make submission, okay.
...of a remedial action plan, and they will approve or deny the remedial action plan.
Okay.
So, that may get action from them if you force them to take action.
That sounds like a direction to go in.
The area that we're talking about, is that higher than the house?
Yes.
So, is there a chance that with torrential rain or that it could...
No, it's, when you contaminate the soil, what you really end up doing is the pollutant, whether it's asphalt byproduct, you know, heavy metal... whether it's asphalt byproduct, you know, heavy metal, pesticides, in essence, it gets glued to the soil. So it really doesn't go anywhere. It just stays in place. And that's why remedial action most times is just cap it because it's just going to stay there in place. And if you don't disturb it, then you don't have any issues.
Where's the well on this site?
That's, so Nick's going there. So it's groundwater that will affect the contaminated soil. So yeah, if there's nothing there, it just sits there forever on top of a hunk of rock, that's true. If below it is transporting the pesticide through groundwater to a well that's drawing down the groundwater, that's when you have problems. So simplified explanation, Paul, but not quite...
We can get a part five analysis done on the water.
To Nick's question, Nick asked, where is the well? I didn't see the...
I believe it's right behind the house. That's the location right there. Because the septic's over here. So the well's going to be 100 feet away from that septic.
And the water is or is not contaminated from the well?
No tests have been run, so we can run a, have a part five done on it. It's a part five analysis. We'll look for the same compounds and everything.
Is the slope from where the well is, the slope's going down to the left, correct?
This is the direction of the slope.
Sorry, you know, it's a good...
It's downhill.
The same.
And it's...
The uphill is not flowing down towards that.
No.
Based on topography.
Correct.
In the remedial action you're planning on taking, capping, capping with asphalt, is that sufficient for residential property?
Yes. What was it? We were doing a combination of capping with asphalt and then just also putting clean fill over the balance of the material.
But my point is, if the property gets sold to a family and they, they're not going to have to rethink this stuff up again, are they?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And where's the neighbor's well across the street?
There is nobody across the street. There's a, I believe the lake is down, Wixton Pond is down here. There's another property on this side that's developed that the Messinas own. And then what's around them is just vacant land. It's part of the subdivision. I don't know the name of it, but it's...
Just to add color to the conversation, Paul mentioned some technical terms, restricted residential and so forth. If the DEC is engaged in this exercise and they determine the site is, has restricted residential limitations on it, that goes into the deed of the property. So when they sell it to the next guy, he knows, I can't plant a garden because there's nasty stuff in the ground and there's a limitation or restriction of the deed to the property. So these aren't just engineering words, they're actually legal words that affect the use and operation of these properties. So it matters, and that's why I'm not criticizing Paul, but Paul's representation that, oh, it's good, doesn't mean anything unless it comes from the regulatory agencies.
That's correct.
And if I don't see a survey with the actual words on it from a deed and I buy that house, I'm not going to know that it's there, to be honest with you.
Right.
I'm not going to read my deed and be like, let me go 22 paces off the coin. It doesn't work that way.
So Paul, I think you have to respond to some of the comments before we go to...
Yes.
All right, there's more work to do here. Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
See you next year. See you next year.
Well, no, I'll make the application that Pat was referencing, and we'll see if we get a response.
Are you representing the next applicant also?
Gilmore?
Yeah.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, Gilmore, 153 Shindagan Hill Road, sketch plans. Mike, comments?
Hold on, let's see. The applicant proposes 6.09 acre lot into two lots on Shindagan Hill Road in Mayapack. The zoning for these lots did not change except for the setback for the new lot. The old lot has an existing structure, which we have an existing structure law in there. Provide an environmental constraints map just to ensure compliance with the net lot area requirement. That's it.
Okay, and Pat?
This is a fully conforming subdivision. No variances are necessary. It looks like all of the issues are appropriately addressed on this. So all got luck, yeah.
And Rich's comments were pretty much referring to different agencies.
Yes.
Paul did get a variance on this though.
Yeah, he did.
Just to make the line straight because he couldn't comply, but it was a wiggling line and that, he made it straight and did the right thing.
Right, you recommended the straight line to the zoning board.
None of those boards have seen the straight line.
That's fairly close. So six acre lot divided into two three acre lots, it's pretty clean, right?
I think you're in a position where you can go to public hearing.
Yeah.
Only two point something acres are required. It's not three and three.
Any comments from the board otherwise? Do we have a motion to schedule public hearing to see what the neighbors think?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Rose distributed the minutes of February 13th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I read the minutes, made some comments. I recommend approving the minutes subject to those comments.
Second subject.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks.